The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, November 9th, 2021 is now called to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be given this evening by Ann Pfefferman, past president of Temple Bethel.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please grant our community leaders wisdom and tolerance. May they govern with justice, compassion, and selflessness. Please provide those who serve on our behalf strength and fortitude. May they lead our community in ways of peace, opportunity, and fairness. Please open our eyes to the barriers which exist, even if by chance. May we find the courage to advocate for individuals who cannot scale those walls. Please provide us the insightfulness to understand doing the right thing has no political affiliation. May we speak the truth for those who have no voice. And please bless our veterans and their families, those who fought, defended, and died for these very ideals, with comfort, healing, recovery, and respect. May their efforts and their bravery be honored in our deeds and our words. Baruch atah rani, gomel chasadim tovim. Blessed are you who has bestowed great kindness. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you very much. Next are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Kanericki.
Thank you, Mr. President. I nominate that we appoint Daniel Chamberlain to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Daniel Chamberlain is appointed to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th, 2021 public hearing?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the October 12th public hearing, 2021 public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report from county commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Costelli. Report from any council special committee. Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 12721?
In ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council establishing a policy to give the St. Joseph County Department of Health standard guidelines regarding the process and procedures to be followed for paid parental leave. Paid parental leave will give parents additional flexibility and time to bond with their child, adjust to their new family's situation, and balance their professional obligations. Petitioner, Health Department.
Bill Number 12721 is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill 12821, an ordinance to vacate a public way or a public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County, public way or public way, located at portions of Pierce Street, Eloise Avenue, Lucille Avenue, Charles Avenue, Keller Street, and Lynn Street, within Lincoln Highlands addition. Petitioner, Mike Diggle.
Bill Number 12821 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Concludes first readings for this evening. Next are resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 12921?
12921, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring and congratulating Evelyn Evy Kirkwood on her retirement as Director of the St. Joseph County Parks Department. Are you ready for the resolution? Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council honoring and congratulating Evelyn Evy Kirkwood on her retirement as Director of the St. Joseph County Parks Department. Whereas Evelyn Evy Kirkwood began her career with the St. Joseph County Parks Department as a part-time interpreter in 1979, and became a full-time employee in 1983. And whereas Evy Kirkwood became the first person in the United States to be a certified interpretive manager. And whereas Evy Kirkwood joined the Parks Department full-time in 1983. And whereas Evy was instrumental in efforts to establish a globally unique environmental research facility in partnership with the University of Notre Dame at St. Joseph County Patrick's, St. Patrick's County Park, excuse me. The 30-acre linked experimental ecosystem facility, ND LEAF, specializes in aquatic research in created mini watersheds, and offers significant collaborative program elements for the public such as the Science Sunday, Girls Ambitious About Learning Science, and Science at Sunset, an outdoor science lecture series for adults. Whereas during her early years as a frontline park interpreter, she launched the first Nature Day camp in the community and created a fee-based interpretive program menu for schools tied to state science standards. In the 1980s, Evy created the Parks as Partners Program to provide free nature programming for underserved children at the Center for the Homeless, the Women's Shelter, and the local school for autistic children. The initiative continues today. And whereas, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to honor Evelyn Evy Kirkwood for her 41 years of dedicated service to the citizens of St. Joseph County. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize and honor our former county parks director Evelyn Evy Kirkwood, and wish her continued success in her future career endeavors.
Dr. Deb Fleming, I'm here tonight to honor one of my dearest friends, Evy Kirkwood. This honor has been a long time coming with COVID and scheduling conflicts pushing out the date. But tonight, I am so happy to be able to take a few minutes to talk about Evy. Throughout her time at the Parks Department, Evy never backed away from a challenge, never. Her passion for helping people and for promoting St. Joseph County have always inspired me. I was so pleased when she agreed to serve with me on the bicentennial committee for our county. For the next six years, I was fortunate enough to work on several committees with Evy, including youth leadership and age-friendly of St. Joseph County. Her tenacity, passion, knowledge, work ethic, and love for our citizens is unmatched. This is why I am pleased to present Evelyn J. Evy Kirkwood, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, a key to the county, along with this certificate which reads, would you like your key to the county right now? There's the key. Need the key? Anyway, I'll give it to you right now. Here's the key.
That's beautiful.
Yes.
It's heavy.
Yes, it is. Says, "Evry Kirkwood began interning for the St. Joseph County Parks Department in 1979 and never looked back. She worked as a park ranger, leisure services supervisor, and the park office receptionist. She moved from full-time interpreter to interpretive services manager, followed by the superintendent of interpretive and leisure services. As director of the county parks, Evy brought her commitment to programs that connect people with nature and the outdoors." Throughout Evy's tenure with the Parks Department, she worked hand-in-hand with countless elected officials, department heads, and staff, and most importantly, the public, earning universal respect for her leadership, depth of knowledge, and dedication to the citizens of St. Joseph County. We, the Board of Commissioners, are honored to present this key to the county in token of our gratitude for her 41 years of service to the citizens of St. Joseph County on this ninth day of November, 2021. And here is this for you too, my dear. Here it is. Lovely. What, hon?
If I could just make a couple of quick comments. Andy Costelli, President of the Board of Commissioners, St. Joseph County offices, seventh floor of this building. I just want to make a couple of comments in addition to what Commissioner Fleming said. Evy's amazing. I mean, she's one of the most, good luck, Steve. I don't know what the heck you're going to do to try and live up to Evy. A couple of things that I always remember about Evy. Number one, you should be given a Medal of Honor for having to put up with Larry Katanzerite for as long as you did. That is amazing. I just wish Larry were here to hear this. And also, I think, speaking of Larry, one of the worst things that he may have done to you was, I think, is LaSalle Trail that was opening by the Darden Road Bridge, and someone had the great idea of tandem bikes for us to ride. So Larry, at the last minute, switched out his ride partners and stuck you with then-Commissioner Dave Thomas. So I don't know that you've ever recovered from that. But then, and I also kind of stuck it to Tim Sexton because I stuck him with me on that. But I will always remember your commitment. And if I were thinking of the Mount Rushmore of county department heads, Evy Kirkwood is certainly going to be on that list. I mean, there was no one better at promoting St. Joseph County and the parks and benefit every citizen of St. Joseph County than Evy. So thank you so much for a lifetime of service. And thank you. You're awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, if you want to get, everyone, I don't know. I don't know what's going on.
I'd say that's up to Evy.
Oh, I would love to have everybody, because that would be fun.
And Evy, do you have anything you'd like to say to this captive audience?
Sure, but I'll keep it short because you have other important things to do.
Thank you very much for this honor. I appreciate all of the comments and the sentiment. It's been 18 months already, but it's kind of nice to be back here among coworkers, former coworkers, and all of you who continue to serve St. Joseph County as you do. One quick story I just would like to share. A colleague of mine had once told me, "Thank you for giving me my family back." And I asked him what that meant. And he said, "Well, I actually had the opportunity to hike for Eddibago Creek County Park with my wife and my daughter. It took a lot to get my daughter to come because she was a teenager, we hardly ever spoke, but we'd gotten her a new camera recently." And I convinced her, he said, "To come out, bring your camera, maybe you can take some pictures, just come and walk with us." Even though very infrequently did the three of them ever have conversations. As they walked along the trail, and his daughter was taking pictures, he said, "All of a sudden, she started talking about school, her boyfriend, her aspirations for college." And it opened up a whole new chapter in their relationship. And he said, "The parks and the natural beauty and the relaxation that we found there is what brought my family back together." So he wasn't thanking me personally. He was thanking all of the St. Joseph County Park employees, the staff, council, the commissioners, all of us that have worked together to create the St. Joseph County Parks and make them what they are today. It's been my honor to serve the citizens and the residents of St. Joseph County and to work alongside of you and my fellow St. Joseph County employees. I greatly appreciate this honor. Thank you very much.
All right, he's doing the back bend. That's amazing.
That's cool.
You have to carry that around her everywhere she goes.
There's no cameras on.
He has to carry that around with you everywhere you go.
Let me go and find the door.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 12921?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 12921 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 12921? All those in favor, motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Let the record show that Bill Number 12921 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 12421?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving an appropriation reduction for the South Bend Airport Authority, Petitioner, South Bend Airport Authority.
Good evening. Thank you. This is very, very simple. The resolution, in essence, is reducing the expense budget as required by the DLGF for our 2021 fiscal year.
Any question? I'm sorry.
No. The reality is, is we had budgeted to spend money that the feds were going to provide to the Airport Authority, and the federal dollars never materialized.
Okay.
So we're not going to be able to spend them.
Okay. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 12421. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, our closed public hearing on 12421. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to pass. Bill Number 12421 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on 12421? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Record show that Bill Number 12421 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 11321?
A resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner is the Mishawaka Leasing Corporation.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill Number 113-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Chris Brown, Economic Development Specialist with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floors of this building. Before you tonight is Bill 11321, a confirming resolution for a tax phase in for Mishawaka Leasing Corporation, which is operating as Latig Systems, Inc. They are located at 14535 Dragoon Trail in unincorporated Mishawaka, which is in Council District I. As a reminder, just real quick, the petitioner is seeking both real and property tax abatement to expand their operations. This would include a 40,000-square-foot building on the north side of their building, kind of to the east on this map. Construction costs would cost about $2.5 million. In addition, there's anticipated to be a $2.8 million investment in new equipment, CNC lathes, and cranes for that new building. The expansion is expected to create 10 jobs, 10 new jobs. We've worked with the petitioner over the course of the last couple of months on finalizing the tax abatement workbook, which you guys have in front of you. In summary, the project scores 350 points on the add-on abatement. This would provide an additional two years onto the normal base three-year abatement. The personal property tax abatement request is five years at 100%. In addition, we have worked with the petitioner on a trail connector piece along the frontage of, along Dragoon Trail. This was actually done prior to this abatement request. There's approximately 1,900 square feet along that frontage that we would need to create a trail that connects the Capitol Avenue Trail system to George Wilson Park. And I can remind you that the George Wilson Park was a featured project of the Ready Grant submission that the South Bend Elkhart Regional Partnership recently submitted to the state of Indiana. This morning, also in addition, redevelopment commission heard and approved a contract for survey and preliminary engineering work for that trail connector piece in the amount of $21,800. In light of all of this, we would like to propose an additional year of abatement, which would essentially be a 50-point add-on from that 350 to get to 400, to extend that to a six-year real property abatement based on a community benefit. So in total, we're asking for a six-year real property tax phase in on a step-down, it's a straight-line step-down scale, as well as a 100-year, or 100-year, 5-year, 100% personal property tax abatement on the equipment. Daniel Latig with Latig Systems is also here if you have any questions about the project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions moving forward.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Petitioner?
Anything said?
Any other comments from council before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on 11321. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, present CEO, South Bend Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street here in downtown South Bend, we're your economic development partner here, just to speak in favor of this incentive. We know you don't take these incentives lightly, that you use these very judiciously. You don't do them very often, but you've put a great practice in place to really help you carefully evaluate these on the front end and then help you guarantee accountability on the other end. Latig's a model employer in our area. They quietly have gone about doing their business on the southeast side of Mishawaka for many years, really a model employer, believes in this community making some significant investment today, not only in building and equipment, but also in people. We'd like to see them continue to grow. Latig takes the message of St. Joseph County around the world, as much of their product is not sold in the U.S. but is sold in other parts of the world. So we think they're a great ambassador and representative, and if you were doing incentives, we think they're exactly the kind of company that should be receiving incentive, and we just wanted to speak in favor of that tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of Bill 11321? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of 11321? Hearing none, our closed public hearing on the bill. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 11321 was made by Councilman Root. It was seconded by Councilman Kanericki. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 11321 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next are salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 12221?
In ordinance, amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, Petitioner, Superior Court.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Have we got it explained? I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, go ahead, please.
This is John Murphy with Chief Deputy Auditor, offices on the second floor. Superior Court is paying out 80 comp hours to an employee who's very important to their organization. And the cost is $1,435.20. It's not an additional appropriation because they found money in their budget to cover this cost.
Thank you. Any questions from council from Mr. Murphy? Thank you, sir. We'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 12221. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, our closed public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill Number 12221 was made by Councilman Kanericki. It was seconded by Councilman Tullien. Any other comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 12221 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 12321?
In ordinance, amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, Petitioner, PSAP.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm Rachel, Executive Director of PSAP, Office 58266, Downey Avenue. I was under the impression that we were going to table this tonight, send it back to committee. Is that accurate?
Is that what you'd like to do?
Yes, sir.
I move that we send this back to committee at the petition's request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill Number 12321 is sent back to committee at the request of the petitioner. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 12121?
In ordinance, amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, Petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Amy Rupi, Department of Health Administrator, with offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the county city building, and this request is utilizing and we would like to create positions for an administrative assistant and our immunization outreach coordinator.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 12121. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 12121. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 12121 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Kana Riki. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kana Riki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 12121 was passed, passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 12521?
In ordinance, amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance, establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021, petitioner Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Amy Rupee with the Department of Health. We are wanting to go from two Directors of Nursing down to one, and we are requesting to use part of our fund balance in order to do so for the rest of this calendar year.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Ms. Rupee, are you going to fill this position, or is there already a candidate in place for this position?
No, we would be posting for that position and doing interviews for that position.
Thank you.
Any other question?
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Any other questions from counsel? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number 12521. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 12521 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzerite. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kana Riki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 12521 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our October 26, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 12021?
In ordinance, appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments here enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number 12021?
For approval. Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 1202121 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kana Riki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes, but no on A.
No on A. Okay. Sorry, hold on a second. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes, but no on A.
And then Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero overall, with two nays on section A of that bill.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 120-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero, with the exception for item A, which passed by a vote of seven to two. Next on the agenda, land use planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 11521?
In ordinance, amending and supplementing Title 15 land use is Chapter 154. The planning and zoning of the St. Joseph County Code is amended for property located at 54565 Sage Road from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District, petitioner Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 115-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Reinfelders Area Plan Commission staff, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 11th and 7th floors of this building. This is a corrective ordinance. We already reviewed it during the committee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Hearing none. Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing on Bill number 11521. Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 11521 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kana Riki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 115-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 11621?
In ordinance, approving the petitioner for a special use filed by WTMC Real Estate LLC for property located at 12646 Heather Park Drive, petitioner WTMC Real Estate LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 116-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. A petitioner manufactures mobile dog grooming vans at a site within the Princess Way Industrial Park. They now wish to consolidate their storage of completed vans on a vacant lot also within the Princess Way Industrial Park. The parcel highlighted there is where they would like to do so. Since this site is not adjacent to the production facility, we needed to count it as its own separate project area for the sake of outdoor storage. Therefore, since they wish to use more than 50% of this parcel for the outdoor storage of these completed vehicles, they need a special use, and that's why we are here today. As you can see, the site is zoned I Industrial, along with a majority of the Princess Way Industrial Park and the vicinity there. The site is currently vacant. When you look at the site plan, they're meeting the setback development standards of the I Industrial District for outdoor storage. This includes the 10-foot side and rear setbacks, as well as the 50-foot front setback. Additionally, in the front, they're providing what the zoning ordinance refers to as type two full-screening landscaping from the public right-of-way, which is required for outdoor storage. In this case, they are opting to provide a four-foot earthen berm along with 11 evergreen trees. They'll also be required to provide a six-foot chain link fence along the front property There are four criteria in the St. Joseph County zoning ordinance that a special use should meet in order to be granted, the first being that the proposed use will not be injurious to public health, safety, comfort, community moral standards, convenience, or general welfare; the second being that the proposed use will not injure or adversely affect the use and value of the adjacent area or property values therein; the third being that the use will be consistent with the character of the district in which it is located; and the fourth being that the proposed use is compatible with the recommendations of the St. Joseph County Comprehensive Plan. In this case, when it received its public hearing before the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, it did get a favorable recommendation four to three, meaning four out of the seven members felt that it met all four of these criteria. During that public hearing, there were four members of the public that spoke in remonstrance. Their main concerns were the aesthetic impact from the outdoor vehicle storage and the thought that it might undermine the character of the Princess Way Industrial Park and affect property values therein. And to their point, generally, this isn't an industrial park where you see a lot of outdoor storage, and for the most part, parking lots are either behind buildings or to the side. But that's not always the case, and if you did wish to grant this special use because you found that it met those criteria, but you were concerned about these impacts, you could always make it subject to written commitments that would require more landscape screening to, for the side property lines. At the very least, staff would recommend that we do make it subject to a written commitment that only operable vehicles be stored on the site. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and there's also a representative for the petitioner on the Zoom call. Thank you.
Any questions from counsel? Mr. Kana Riki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sean, I'm not sure if this falls under Board of Zoning Appeals, but we've received the covenants for the industrial park, and it seems like your case that this meets the requirements for a special use variance are there, but it seems less applicable with some of the covenants in here, and I'm just kind of curious, who enforces this covenant?
It would generally be enforced by an HOA. I don't know specifically the terms of this covenant. It's kind of outside my purview to interpret covenants, but I will say that no decision that's made here today will affect anyone's ability to enforce those covenants or render them any less valid. I mean, there's still sound private agreements that can be enforced.
But again, I mean, like, who would do the enforcing? Is it the lesser here, or who would do it? Because I mean, one of, one of the, one of the lines here does pretty explicitly say, yeah, well, basically, vehicles of all different sorts. I won't read it. But it, it seems like this specifically would violate this covenant, even if it doesn't violate a potential case for a special use variance. So who resolves that conflict?
Whoever's designated in the covenant itself. So, I mean, again, I'm not really here to speculate what the covenants cover or who has enforcement rights.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you. Petitioner?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you. Jordan Wyatt, Abbott Marsh Consultants, 315 West Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana. Thanks for considering this petition. The site under consideration, as Sean stated, will only be used as a parking lot for the staging of these brand-new vehicles related to this business. One thing I wanted to highlight as well is that the parking lot will be completely paved. The special use that the petitioners are requesting was a regulation that was part of the consolidation of the industrial districts that was done back in 2020. This regulation is really intended to give you, counsel, a say in the approval of heavy industrial uses such as lumberyards, construction materials, or materials processing, you know, that generally have a lot of outdoor storage and can become, incidentally, in a nuisance. And a parking lot is far from what those uses would, kind of situation that they would create. Other uses that are allowed by right in the industrial district could be far more intense and could include outdoor storage, as long as their storage is less than 50% of the site. Because special uses are tied to the property and mitigate concerns about these potential uses, Waggin Tales is fully willing to commit to that ring commitment that Sean was talking about, to allow the outdoor storage only for the vehicles related to the business. All drainage on site will have to be contained on site, subject to approval of the county engineer, meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance that Sean mentioned, the setbacks, especially the 50-foot setback in the front yard, and the ring commitment that we're willing to do should mitigate any concerns about neighboring property values. And I'm going to turn it over to the petitioners that we have in person there. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Anders. I'm with the law firm Miller Johnson, and we represent Waggin Tales Mobile Conversions in connection with this request. One thing I'd like to just highlight is that within the I Industrial District, parking lots and outdoor storage is a permitted use by right. All that the petitioner here is asking for is a special use with respect to exceeding that 50% outdoor storage requirement. You know, sort of in short, if we weren't looking to exceed that 50% under the zoning ordinance, we could park those vans and occupy less than 50% of the property. And as we expect here tonight, as was raised at the BZA hearing, is that neighbors have voiced concerns with respect to property values. We'd just like to stress that in this case, this is an industrial park. It is zoned industrial. The parking of completed vans is something that is far less intense than is typically used in an industrial park and is typically associated with an industrial district. And here, we don't think that the parking of completed vans necessarily detracts from neighboring property values, as throughout the industrial park, there are vehicles parked outside of production facilities. As the gentleman from the Area Plan Commission stated earlier, this is only unique because the parking lot is across the street from Waggin Tales Mobile Planning, or, what, sorry, Waggin Tales Conversions Production Facility. I'm going to pass it on to Steve Wedding, who's here from the company itself.
I'm Steve Wedding. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Waggin Tales Mobile Conversions. We're at 12633 Heather Park Drive in Granger. As has already been stated, we are, we convert new Mercedes vans, new Ford Transit vans, and new Ram ProMaster vans into mobile pet grooming units and mobile veterinary units. We have 50 employees and their families that the business supports. We own four properties in the Princess Way Industrial Park, either directly or through our founder, Dennis Gannett, who's on the Zoom. In October of 2004, we acquired our first parcel at 12633 Heather Park Drive and built a 24,000-square-foot manufacturing and office facility. We've been storing new vans outdoors at that site since 2005. In October of 2005, Randy Nelson, who is the owner of the Copy Image and is here tonight, acquired his property across the street at 12626 Heather Park Drive. In November of 2016, we acquired our second parcel adjacent to the first, just to the east, at 12687 Heather Park Drive, directly from Merrill Realty. That's who we acquired it from, and built a 12,000-square-foot manufacturing facility, and we've been storing new vans outdoors at this site since 2017. We're growing again. In July of this year, we acquired Lot 17 in the northeast corner of the Princess Way Industrial Park at 12806 Sandy Court, and we plan to build a 23,000-square-foot corporate headquarters on that property. And then also in July of this year, we acquired directly from Merrill Realty Lot Number Six, which is the subject of this petition, at 12646 Heather Park Drive, with the intention of building a staging and storage lot for new vans, new vans. Prior to closing on both of these projects, we sought the approval of our development plans from the Merrills. They're the developers of the Princess Way Industrial Park. Mark Merrill, who's here tonight of Merrill Realty, advised me on the phone during the week of June 28 to meet with his brother, Chris Merrill, because, quote, "It's his industrial park," close quote. Chris met me in our conference room to review our development plans and determine his approval of these plans for both properties. At the close of that meeting on July the 1st, Chris provided approvals for both developments without any objection. Six days later, we closed on Lot 13 with the Bradley Company, and 19 days after July the 1st, we closed with, I closed at Meridian Title with Mark Merrill on Lot 6, the one we're talking about tonight. We would not have closed on those properties had we not had the Merrills' approval. We would not have closed on those properties had we not had the Merrills' approval. Lastly, later you may hear about the poor upkeep of our current storage lot across the street from the Capri Restaurant in Granger, and insinuations about our lack of upkeep on this proposed new lot. The poor presentation of a current lot, the current lot is a rental property owned by principals of the Capri Restaurant. And its poor presentation, including the restaurant's dumpster, which sits out front of the gates to the lot we're renting, along with the dilapidated fencing, are an impetus for us to build this site at Lot 6. In fact, we've had catalytic converters stolen off of our units at the temporary site. Our other properties are landscaped and well-maintained, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Thank you, Mr. President. So you are aware of these covenants for the industrial park?
Yes.
Okay, and it's your opinion, after working through Merrill Properties, that you've essentially received approval for this development?
Correct.
Okay. According to, I mean, like you said, you wouldn't have bought them if you hadn't have gotten some sort of approval. Was that, like, in writing anywhere, or? I don't necessarily need to see it.
Yeah, Chris, okay, 7121, that's the building property, and this is showing a 15-foot setback, which we had to revise to a 50 because of the BZA ruling, but he signed off on a 15-foot setback on Lot 6.
The plan we're seeing is actually more restrictive than what was permitted by the declarant in the covenants.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel?
I've got one.
Mr. Nolan?
Just, and not really specifically to this property, but I didn't follow, where is the new corporate facility? It's in the same development, but?
It's in the northeast corner of the industrial park. So it's basically?
At the cul-de-sac there?
The cul-de-sac, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 116-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the counsel, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Pam Nelson, co-owner of The Copy Image Incorporated. Our business has been providing office equipment, sales, and services to the community since 1993. We are located at 12626 Heather Park Drive, which is the lot directly next to the lot that WTMC Real Estate wishes to convert to a parking lot. WTMC Real Estate, the property owner of 12646 Heather Park Drive, contends that Chris Merrill signed off on their plans to build an outdoor storage facility, which I gave you with the covenants. It's this picture right here. I met with Chris Merrill and Mark Merrill of Merrill Realty this past Friday. Chris stated that he signed a vague preliminary drawing on WTMC Real Estate's proposed plans. As you can see what Chris signed, it does not show any line dimensions for boundaries, setbacks, retention ponds, et cetera. Chris said the restrictive covenants of Princess Way Industrial Park, which I gave you guys a copy of those, that were filed with the county recorder's office on January 24, 2002, would still need to be met before any permits could be obtained and construction could begin. So actually, you said, I think Councilman Karnicki said, this is less restrictive. I think when you were talking to them, it's not less restrict, I mean, it's not more restrictive, I should say, I'm sorry. It would be less restrictive. The restrictive covenants that would be breached if the special use permit were to be granted are: Anything erected on a property must be at least 70 feet from the street and at least 20 feet from any boundary line that does not border a street. No more than 70% of the buildable lot shall be impervious. Outdoor storage of any type must meet the following requirements: Vehicles must be parked in a garage, or if vehicles are stored on a lot, they cannot be seen from any street and must be shielded from view from any adjoining lot. They're not proposing any landscaping on either side of that lot, and there's two buildings on both sides, or on each side. The plan proposed tonight by WTMC Real Estate is vague on details, particularly those details concerning the restrictive covenants and the impact of neighboring businesses. Their plan violates multiple Princess Way covenants. I am encouraging the counsel to not grant the special use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition of Bill 116-21? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the counsel.
Good evening. My name is Randy Nelson. I'm the president of The Copy Image. We're located at 12626 Heather Park Drive. My building is the building next to the lot.
Can you speak up a little bit, sir?
My building is the building that is next to the lot that WTC wants to convert into their parking lot. I have several concerns, other than the ones that Pam had mentioned. So I don't believe that WTC, I provided a listing here of the current industrial park. And this particular industrial park is not like your typical industrial park. One of the main reasons I moved into this industrial park was because of the covenants, and I wanted to be able to maintain my property values. So this is an unusual industrial park. It doesn't have a lot of the outdoor stories that you would see in a traditional industrial park. So I feel that WTC hasn't provided a plan or an impact study on how much this would affect my property values. I believe it would affect them. You know, over time, a changeling fence is not going to look attractive, especially if it's right next to my building. The other thing is, is I'm concerned that if they turn that lot, which is a good-sized lot, into a hard surface area, that there's going to be water runoff issues. I talked to some people at the Environmental Protection Agency. There is going to be difficult for that water to go anyplace but downhill. If you look at the picture that I have in my packet of information that I gave you, you can see this road goes downhill. My building is lower than that lot. So naturally, that water is going to run towards my building, which, if you look in this photo here, there's my building, there's the lot, and my building is lower than that lot by a little bit. The other thing is, with the water retention, if you look, this is my retention pond next to my building. It's never had water in it the entire time I have been in the industrial park back there. So the water's going to have to go somewhere, which is probably into my property. And so my concerns are property values. How's this going to affect my property values long-term? I think it's going to affect it negatively. My other concern is the water runoff. Where's this water going to go? Currently, I have also included some photos in my package of the retention pond across the street from me, because they have a large paved surface over there. It's not even 100%. And of course, that water is running into their retention ponds and settling there and creating, as you can see in the photos, quite a mess. So my concerns are, like I mentioned, is this water just going to be standing water, which is going to turn into a breeding ground for mosquitoes? You know, we have to go outside to unload semi-trucks, unload UPS, dump trash, et cetera. We're going to be the lot that's going to be affected the most. I feel that their plan is skimpy on details overall. They don't really have any details concerning the impact of neighboring businesses and the potential environmental impact that it could have in the industrial park area. So I am encouraging the counsel to deny the special use permit. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mark Merrill, and I own Merrill Realty. I own Lots 1, 2, 3, 19, 20, 24, and Lot Number 5, which is adjacent to the property. And I also sold them the property that's in question. It was brought up at the zoning committee meeting that there were no covenants that had been signed or recorded, and that was inaccurate. In fact, they have covenants. They knew about the covenants because they already had properties there. The covenants were recorded on January 24, 2002. It was not my intent in selling this property to Wagon Tales that they would try to circumvent the covenants that were in place, that all owners have had to abide by. If the council approves their request, I'd like to kind of take a look at the picture there. Their property is located on a corner, and I would like to know where they plan to safely offload and unload their vehicles, whether it's going to be on that property, or will it be on the public right-of-way blocking my property directly left-adjacent or Copy Image directly right-adjacent. They should be required to have an area signed on their property for this purpose and not block other businesses in the area. Much has been brought up about landscaping and screening for Lot 7, where Copy Image is, but nothing, no assurances have been made for my property on Lot 5. And their drawings don't include much information if they're going to go building over 50% as storage. As far as water containment, my property to the left and Copy Image to the right, it's, I think, got good grounds and concerns for that type of property and usage at this point. When I sold the property, it was my understanding they were going to have their corporate offices there, and I think they changed their minds at that point. So I think there's a lot more that needs to be discussed and seen as far as landscaping, water retention, and safety issues with having semi-trucks on that curve of that property.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition of Bill Number 116-21? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on the bill. The petitioner has three minutes to rebut. Any comments made in opposition to the bill?
Thank you. If I may just touch on two items that were raised by the opposition comments. First, with respect to the restrictive covenants for Princess Way Industrial Park. At no time has Wagon Tales put forth, whether at the BZA or here tonight, that those restrictive covenants do not exist. Those restrictive covenants are a private agreement amongst private individuals that are enforceable by private individuals, not at the county level. Again, I want to reiterate that this is a request only for special use with respect to that 50% requirement that is in the county's zoning ordinance. This is not with respect to whether or not parking vehicles on this site is appropriate because that is permitted by the zoning ordinance. And the second item that I'd like to address is with respect to the sort of site design and stormwater drainage requirements that have been raised. Those are all items that we understand, based on our reading and interpretation of the ordinance, are handled later on in this process with respect to our application for an improvement location permit. Logistically, we are bringing this request for a special use permit because, in order to design a site, we have to know whether or not we can improve more than 50% of it. There's no use spending the money to provide fully fleshed-out drawings, site design, stormwater drainage, and everything else at this point if we do not know whether or not we're going to be able to put together and improve the property by more than 50%. It is our intention, Wagon Tales' intention, that when this is before the Area Plan Commission with respect to the improvement location permit, that all of those site design, stormwater drainage, and other sort of concerns will be addressed in the fully fledged site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, the comments about trucks and unloading, these vehicles are all delivered to Gurley Leap Mercedes and to Harold Ziegler in Plainwell, Michigan, and they're driven down one by one to our site. There is no truck dropping them off or any semis or anything with regard to this site.
Thank you. Mr. Morton?
Mr. Wedding?
Yes.
Would you be able, I know your attorney said you aren't prepared to make any commitments yet in terms of site development until this would get approved. Would you be able to comment as to what your intention is with, in respect to screening from the Merrill property and from the image, Copy Image property on the two sides, if this were to be approved or if you were to develop this like you'd want to?
Obviously, we'll comply with the regulations. We're also, we are willing to do screening along the Copy Image side. The Merrill side, the building sits on the property line, basically. So I'm, I can't comment on that one at the moment. As you can see, I mean, there's little room. Obviously, Birmingham would be on our property, so we can discuss that, but for the Copy Image side, absolutely. By the way, there are no windows on that Merrill building on that side.
There are no windows?
There are no windows. The windows are all in the front.
You say, is it right on the property line, or is it setback?
The survey we have shows 10 feet on the south end and 9 feet 8 inches on the north end.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from counsel? Do I hear a motion on Bill Number 1?
Just a comment I'd like to make is that there's been a lot of conversation about the covenants and whether or not they'll be adhered to, and just to be clear, that's not what the land use is about. What we're here for is exactly what we heard here is on this Area Board of Zoning Appeals request, or not request, but this petition in front of us does not, whether or not the covenants are enforced or not is up to the people that have them in place. I don't feel that should be a bearing on our decision, not trying to convince anybody one way or the other on this particular bill, but that shouldn't be a contributing factor in my mind.
Any other comments? Mr. Kanarecki?
Sean, do you have any insights on the water issue?
I do not, other than to say that they're absolutely correct. They will need to get an improvement location permit prior to construction of the parking lot. It would have to be inspected by the county engineer's office, and it would have to meet county standards as far as stormwater retention goes at that time before any permits would be issued.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? Hearing none, may I have a motion on Bill 116-21?
Would you like to comment, Mr. Fowles, in your district? Do you have any strong feelings one way or the other?
No, I do that.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 116-21?
Make a motion for approval with the amendment that only operable and properly-registered vehicles are allowed there, and I'd actually also like to get an opinion from Area Plan about the additional screening. I don't know the different levels and this and that.
Yeah, so, well, I will say, first of all, if you don't impose any additional screening now at this level, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that would require them to landscape on the property line adjacent to Copy Image, since it's industrial to industrial. So this is your opportunity to do that. Type 2 landscaping would be what the zoning ordinance considers full screening. That would be like four evergreens for every 30 feet of lot line. The other alternative is type 1, which is just like a shade tree every 40 feet of lot line. You can also require fencing.
That's what I was asking for, the Level 1, Level 2, what they meant. So I would add the Level 2 to that as well, to my motion.
Is there a second to Mr. Nolan's motion?
Could he repeat his motion?
Could you repeat your motion, sir?
Motion would be for approval with the amendment that it only, that only operable and properly-registered vehicles are allowed and the Level 2 screening.
Do you want that on both sides, or?
Both sides.
Both sides, okay.
Is there a second to Mr. Nolan's motion?
Second.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number 11621 was made by Mr. Nolan. It was seconded by Mr. Kanarecki. Any further comments from any council member? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
No.
Motion carries eight-one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 11621 was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 11721?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for property located at 50770 Princess Way from I Industrial to C Commercial District. Petitioner Merrill Realty LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number 117-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Ryan Fellows, Area Plan Commission staff again. This property is just a few doors down from the property we just discussed. This again is in the Princess Way Business Park. The application is to rezone the yellow outlined property in the center, which is currently zoned industrial. The property to the north and to the south are currently zoned commercial, and this is seeking to make that more continuous row of commercial on that right side of the road as you're entering the park. Lot is currently vacant. The property to the north is a business little complex with offices that is similar concept to what the site plan proposed is. Here's a visual from on the ground looking north. You can see the KOA on the left-hand side of the road. And then, looking at the reverse angles, looking to the south with that business park sign on the left side there. And then here's a site plan of what is being proposed to be built there. And in looking at the criteria found in state law, these five listed here, the Area Plan Commission reviewed this and recommends it favorably with a seven-zero vote. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any more detail for any aspect of the case.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes, I have a question, perhaps it has to do with education. Oftentimes, we think that industrial is a more open kind of designation than commercial. If that be the case, what's the point? But help me with that.
Yeah, the application is to switch from industrial, which is, one way to describe, I suppose, is open, but allows more. In this case, the application is to switch to commercial zone, and there's just different setback requirements, different uses that are allowed. And in this case, for what they want to do to make it into more of a business park, it needs to be zoned commercial, and we could go into more details if you want, but that's kind of the basic part of it.
Well, you might send me a note or something so that I can understand why it is that somebody's already got an industrial designation, needs to change it to do what they want to do. That's my question. I don't want to take a lot of time, but please help me with that understanding.
Ordinances are generally built one of two ways. One is to pyramid all of the lower uses into it, so once you get to the most intense zoning, all of the lesser intense uses are allowed. The other way is the way our ordinance is written, which does not allow the, for example, a single-family home just on its own would not be allowed in industrial district even though it's considered among the least intense uses. And so it's partly to keep the character to be the same as other industrials-owned properties. But in this case, this was property was zoned industrial back in 1987. Two years later, a couple of the properties were rezoned to commercial, and a few years after that, more were rezoned commercial, a few years after that, more were rezoned commercial, and that kind of overall changed the character of this area to be a mix of commercial and industrial. And in this kind of row, heading into the park from State Road 23, you're ending up with several C Commercial districts in a row, and that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, fine. If you look, if you look sort of vertically, it looks like an island in the middle of industrial when you look at it vertically, but let's move on, it's fine.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Terry Lang from Lang Feeney and Associates. Our address is 715 South Michigan Street in South Bend. I represent the petitioner, Merrill Realty. The petition before you is to take one lot that is industrial, zone it to commercial as Ryan had indicated. The proposed plan is to extend the office park, which is located immediately to the north of this site, onto this site with an additional four office buildings, exactly in nature as those to the north, and they're also proposing a maintenance garage there for being able to maintain all of the parcels that the Merrill Realty owns out there. So the petition before you kind of takes the last parcel along Princess Way there and brings it in conformity with commercial on either side of it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing now, we'll open the public hearing on bill 117-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 11721 was made by Councilman Kanarecki. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on 11721?
Mr. Morton?
Ms. Katanzright?
Could Mr. Lang be a little more explicit? And when he says a maintenance garage, what kind of, what kind of things would you be having outside the maintenance garage, Mr. Lang? You're talking like snowplows and trucks and things like that, or service vehicles?
He needs to speak into the microphone. I couldn't hear what he was saying.
Sorry, I had it muted. Can you be a little more explicit as to what you are describing when you state a maintenance garage would also be on the property?
For the snowpiling that they do at the parking lots, also for the mowing equipment that they have, that they take care of their properties with, that's the purpose of the maintenance there for the vehicle that they use for those.
And those vehicles would be located within the maintenance garage at all times, is that you're stating?
Yes, they would.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
And Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 11721 was passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 11821?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for addressed and unaddressed property located at a budding 10371 and 10389 McKinley Highway totaling two acres, more or less, from our single-family district to I industrial district. Petitioner Robert Kaiser and M.M. Brook LLC.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number 118-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Fellows again with Area Plan Commission staff. As you see on the screen, this is the yellow parcels that are zoned our single-family in the center, and to the north and to the east is the light-blue shaded I industrial district, which is Indiana Earth property, and to the west is the C Commercial district with a businesses there, and Bert's Appliances and Uncle Paul's Flea Market, that's right. Anyway, this is to really incorporate the yellow zoned areas, which are currently residential to, as kind of a spill-over, the property to the north and to the east, Indiana Earth property, has created an agreement with the property owner that's on the, out of these three lots, the one that's on the, on the right side here. They've already expanded their use of industrial storage onto these properties, and then on the left-hand side, they already own that through a different entity. But again, they've expanded that industrial use. However, it is currently zoned residential, and that use as an expanded industrial storage is not permitted unless it is rezoned, and that's why we're here. There's a lot more detail I could go into about all the landscaping that's going to be to shield the neighboring areas, but this has all gone through the review process and the variances have been sought, have been agreed to. If anyone has any questions about more into that landscape screening with the evergreens and the type-two landscaping as we describe it, and the mix of existing landscaping, I'd be happy to go into greater details, but this is something that comes to you with a favorable recommendation with a seven-zero vote, and I'd be happy to go into more details.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you. Petitioner?
Thank you. Mike Danz from Dan Charner and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioner. As Ryan had mentioned, what we're trying to do is bring these two properties into compliance. Indiana Earth owns all the property to the north and to the east of this. They also purchased the home between where the commercial center is and the existing house. What we'd like to be able to take is these two pieces of property, rezone them to industrial. As Ryan had said, this is going to be part of the Indiana Earth operation, not part of any kind of processing that they do on the larger parcel that they have. These will be mainly for some outside storage for storm structures. As Ryan had shown you on the aerial photo, there's a portion of these back properties where they are already having storage for those structures. Those are basically just concrete drywells and concrete piping. That is it. That'll be placed where you see it right now on the storage area. There's gravel pavement that they've put that on. That would be continued if council would approve this zoning. What we had also done is shown heavy screening, so where you see between the houses and where the storage area is, there would be the type-two landscaping that they talked about previously, which are evergreen screening. They also asked us to maintain a 20-foot buffer between our property and the property to the west, which is the commercial property, so we will be doing that as well. So from the street area from McKinley, you would not see any of the outside storage areas. That would be totally screened, and also along that western boundary. There wouldn't obviously be any screening along the east or the north because that's adjacent to the existing Indiana Earth operation. And so what they end up doing is they end up moving those materials to that particular part of the storage area on those lots. What we would ask, hopefully, is approval of the council for this. Indiana Earth does have a land agreement for the one property, which Ryan had mentioned to the east. At some point in time, the land contract is, is that that owner would move out of that house and that'll just be used by Indiana Earth. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you. We now open the public hearing on bill 11821. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now, now close the public hearing on 11821. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number 11821 was made by Councilman Root. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from council on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullien?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kanarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion carries nine-zero.
Let the record show that bill number 118-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number 11921?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code is amended for unaddressed property located on the south side of Cleveland Road, approximately 0.3 miles west of Live Grove, containing 52 acres, more or less, from our single-family district to I industrial district. Petitioner James H. M. Barbara K. Kidder.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Why, certainly you may. Bill number 119-21 comes to the full council without a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Ryan Fellows, Area Plan Commission staff again. As described, this is on the south side of Old Cleveland Road across from General Stamping to the north, and it is just to the, just to the west of Olive Road and to the east of Poppy Road. It is the shaded crosshatched parcel in the center with, to the north, zoned industrial. Here's a picture from the property looking to the east, and then a couple more pictures with General Stamping. You can see on that top picture is on the left side with the subject property set to be rezoned on the right side with corn growing at it right at that time. And the site plan that was submitted did not contemplate a specific thing on the site plan, but the application did specify that it was a spec building for a warehousing operation. And supplemental to the application, this site plan was submitted for discussion purposes only, and this does show what the site might be developed into, space for to grow for additional property, additional expansion, and also in the future, it would be possible to duplicate the same on the, on the western side of this property so you could have two that look the same as this. During the review process, we engaged heavily with the county engineer's office discussing ways we can address traffic patterns, and the county engineer is available tonight and would be able to answer any questions specific to that. And we also met with area residents several weeks ago. We were at a neighborhood meeting that the petitioner had organized, the county engineer and other county staff and I were there. One of the questions was, well, what about light? Can the site lighting be made so it's not causing light pollution? And I did want to include this slide showing that whenever the applicant, if they were successful, does apply for a building permit, part of that review process would go through our office where the standards do require light that's directed downward, and we could go into more details about lighting if that comes up. As part of the review process, we look at the comprehensive plan, in particular the land use plan. The light-blue shading is for the industrial growth area, which is where this property is located, so this has been designated back in the 2002 comprehensive plan as appropriate to be rezoned for this use. And in looking at the additional characteristics in the state law, the Area Plan Commission has come to a favorable recommendation on a seven-zero vote. I'd be happy to go into any detail of any subject, and as I said, the county engineer is available to talk more about any traffic regulation issues.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. My name is Paul Fair with Holiday Properties, offices located at 3454 Douglas Road in South Bend. Thank you, Mr. President and council members, for the opportunity to be in front of you this morning. I know I've been in front of you here just a few weeks ago and at the Area Plan Commission, and Ryan has given his presentation several times, so I will try not to duplicate what's already been said, but I want to just start with a little reminder of kind of who Holiday is. We're a regional real estate development firm located here in South Bend, headquartered here since the late '70s. We've been developing and We've been developing industrial product really since mid 90s in this area, near the intersection of 8090 and US 31. We currently own and operate several properties and have developed at least a couple of million square feet in the area since we started developing this property type. We believe we do a good job on the development side as well as the operation of these properties going forward. And we are here tonight to talk about our latest industrial project. We're buying the properties from the Kidder Farms, as you heard, and the objective is to rezone to industrial from single-family. The property is about 52 acres, and we plan to have two to three industrial buildings at full buildout. That will be approximately 500,000 to 700,000 square feet. And the most likely users of this building or of these buildings would be logistics companies, warehousing, or assembly light manufacturing, similar to companies that are located in this area already, like Tire Rack, General Stamping, et cetera. Based on past facilities that we've developed and are currently operating, we think it's a good assumption to use a one-per-2,000-square-foot assumption for employment. So we would expect using a 600,000-square-foot number that we'd see approximately 300 employees at this site, again, at full construction. This is a project site, as Ryan mentioned. As you can see, we have industrial that's been developed over the past two decades to the north, agricultural property to our south, and light residential to our east and west. And the reason we really like this site and think that there's a big opportunity here for industrial development is because of its proximity to the intersection of these two highways. This is the gold standard for industrial development, is where industrial operation in our community wants to be, both for the logistics of products as well as the movement of people. As many of you, I'm sure, have seen, finding employees right now is particularly difficult. And so being able to have access to this intersection that now allows you to pull from a wide labor pool is a huge advantage. Also, this is a large site that's served by utilities, and there aren't that many in our community that are in a state that are close to developable so we can capture opportunities for industrial development, which really makes this site even even more important to to capture industrial opportunities that come to the community looking to establish a new location or for existing companies to expand. This is just the zoning application. Ryan showed this, but I just want to reiterate, we are not asking for variances. We will be adhering to all setbacks per the zoning requirements. And in addition, we will do heavy landscape screening. This is just a showing the site plan of the first building that we plan to to start. But I want to note the landscape that we show on both property lines, the east and west. The in the northwest corner where there's a large stand of trees, that's existing, we will plan to keep a minimum of 50%. That's approximately two acres, and we would keep at least 50% of those trees intact to keep that screening intact. But where there's not screening adjacent to residential areas, we will add landscape berms as well, or I'm sorry, topsoil berms with landscaping on top of those to make sure that we are continuing to screen with evergreen or also working with neighbors to to select the appropriate screening plantings in order to provide year-round coverage. Brian mentioned the lighting that we'll plan to keep here or that we'll plan to install for any exterior lighting. That would be full cutoff. We would add extra screening as well. You can put extra shielding on any exterior lighting along the east and west property lines to make sure that we will keep the light on our property as much as we possibly can. The next part I want to get into is really the the main concern that we've heard from the neighbors. And we have met with the neighborhood on several occasions. We met with a large neighborhood group in October. We heard loud and clear that the main issues here were traffic, namely truck traffic on in areas where there's not supposed to be truck traffic as well as speed. And so we have followed up with that and met with a couple of neighbors or a group of neighbors, mostly on Poppy Road, to try and come up with some solutions on what we can do. To just go through this slide, this is our first and most important piece of infrastructure development to help with the traffic. There was a major concern early on when we brought this plan forward that we needed to address the traffic going to the west into our side or on Old Cleveland. So we we worked with Adam March Consultants to come up with a conceptual plan that would manage that by adding a dedicated left turn lane into a single point of entry at our site. So we will only have one entry point, which is shown right in the middle. It'll be lined up with Didem. There's a dedicated left turn lane, and the General Stamping already has a dedicated right, so any traffic going west will be unabated and will be able to continue to move freely through there. In addition, at that exit point for our site, we will have a dedicated left turn lane. Major concern, again, that we've heard is truck traffic going to the west on Old Cleveland, down to Poppy, primrose, et cetera. And we are willing to commit to putting some sort of physical impediment restricting height on that left turn lane. We can do that on private property, we believe, where it can't be done in public right of way, of course. But we believe that will help with trucks making a west turn movement there and keeping them off of roads where they don't belong. In addition, the drive to the east will be an exit-only drive, so no entries will occur there. So again, everybody will have to use the dedicated left turn lane into our site. And we will design that to move traffic only east. So it will physically be designed to send traffic east with a curb line that directs people that way. In addition to those items, we've come up with a list of roughly nine or 10 different traffic reduction strategies or methods that we put down and sent to the neighborhood group that we met with here two weeks ago. Sky was involved in that meeting, and so it's a list that the county is going to either be doing or looking into, as well as Holiday committing to several of those. I do have that list, and I'm happy to share it with you all. But it's things such as LED speed limit signs so that people notice them. It's a solar board that shows what speed you're going, things like that. And, you know, things as simple as Holiday committing to work with the neighbors to communicate to businesses in the area to educate their truck drivers on where no truck routes are. Us looking into working with mapping apps like Waze and Google and MapQuest on how we can keep or, you know, get those apps to make sure they list the no-truck routes on their app so that when a truck driver plugs in the address he's going to, it doesn't send him on a road he's not supposed to be on, he or she. So again, it's those types of things that we think in culmination will help to address these items. And we are here to commit to meeting with the neighborhood. This doesn't end tonight. This is something that will continue ongoing to make sure that there's communication and that we're hearing their concerns and doing our best to address them and working with the county to do the same. This, again, just shows the the current traffic in the area. We expect, again, at full buildout, it would generate just over 2,000 cars daily, the majority going to the eastbound, but there is some westbound traffic that we would expect to be generated. Again, we'll work our best to limit any truck traffic to the west. And this really just talks about our traffic at peak volume, which is about 243 cars between seven to nine and four and six normal business hours. I am happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Hearing then will open a public hearing on Bill 11921. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Jeff Ray, President and CEO, South Bend Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street here in South Bend. You're the county's economic development partner, here to speak in favor of this request this evening. Build it, and they will come. So our experience on really on this northwest piece of the area there is build spec buildings, and they will be filled. Today, we cut a ribbon on a 50,000-square-foot addition. Logan Industries here moving into one of those spec buildings. But when you look down the list and you think of Patterson, Hublareco, AM General, Amazon, Tyson Crup, Pepsi, CTDI, Logan, Polywood, Technoplast, all moved into existing spec buildings. So this is really the trend. This year, 62 different companies have reached out to us, looking at opportunities in the area. Almost 80% of those were looking for an existing building or a shovel-ready site. So we've been with you before, talking many times about the shovel-ready site and why some of that is important, but the existing buildings have been a desire. The sweet spot has been in the square footage that Paul has been talking about. We think that Holiday's track record in this area, they've done most of these projects up there, they've done nice quality projects. They're from here, they work here, they're people of their word, they've done great projects. And we think if they're telling you or sharing their plans with you, that they're going to follow through on those and bring a great user, that ultimately, at the end of the day, is going to add to our tax base and bring more employees here. And so just would would voice our support of their request here this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Good evening. I'm Maureen Nemeth, and I reside at 53220 Poppy Road. And as Paul and others have stated, the Holiday Corporation has really been working very, very hard to meet our needs and hear our concerns. As they mentioned before, the traffic was the biggest one. Being on Poppy, any truck driver, if they Google, they don't take Olive Road, they don't take the bypass, they end up taking 20 and cutting through to Poppy Road. It was in the spring that I ended up sitting on our front porch. I did not pick prime time, 7:00 in the morning or late in the afternoon, but in a half an hour's time, I counted 113 cars and trucks, and I'm talking semis as well. And that's why we were really concerned about the amount of traffic. But as I said, working with Sky and Paul and the neighbors giving their input, right now, we feel very comfortable with what they have proposed, and therefore, we are in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of Bill 11921? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of Bill 11921?
My name is Susan Booker, and I live on 53020 Poppy Road, which is right on the corner of Old Cleveland and Poppy Road. When we moved there, it was cornfields, farms, and it was peaceful and quiet. Now, yes, they build ugly buildings, and they will come. And they have come. And they have come and come. And it's time to put a limit on where neighborhoods start and buildings with semis end. We have been there for 30 years. They have just sold all this land to these vacant, there are vacant buildings out there that have no businesses in them, and they have hiring signs out, but yet they're still building these big buildings that just lay empty and no one's doing anything about it. We have to stop this. I don't have to sit on my front porch. I can sit in my living room and watch the semis go by. I can hear them every night, all night long. I can see the race drivers coming down Old Poppy, Old Cleveland Road at 40 mile-an-hour speed limit, going 80. They do not stop. They do not ever stop, night and day. Now, there is a three-way stop on Brick and Primrose that has cut the traffic immensely there, and it's not as dangerous as it used to be. But we have just as much, if not more, traffic on our three-way. We can stop these people from coming down Old Cleveland Road at outrageous speeds and coming around our corner at 60 miles an hour, cutting through our lawn, knocking over the stop sign. We could stop that with a three-way stop. I totally, I agree with Maureen. The Holiday has been great. They've taken our income into this traffic problem, and they've tried to work with us. But we still have so many more questions before the neighbors feel that they're just infringing on every aspect of our life, not just, you know, quiet and peaceful, but just noisy and pollution. And driving over our lawn and hitting mailboxes and stop signs. I mean, somewhere along the line, people that have lived there for 30 years need to say, hey, that's enough. You've come enough, far enough to our house already. You can't come anymore. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition of Bill 11921? Hearing non, public hearing is now closed. Petitioner has three minutes to rebut. Any comments made in opposition?
I guess I'd like to just again reiterate what Jeff had said in that there is strong activity in the industrial market. Buildings right now, our occupancy is very high, and right, the market vacancy is about 2%. I know industrial buildings are not necessarily considered Taj Mahal, but these do provide a space for something that's important to our community and job creation for a large portion of our population. This particular site is one that doesn't require a lot of infrastructure in order to get it to a developable point. We will do it as responsibly as we possibly can. Again, we will work with the neighborhood. As Ms. Booker mentioned, I did grab Sky when he walked in to talk about the three-way stop, see if there's the ability to study that and see if it's warranted. So again, that'll be our commitment to try and work with the neighborhood going forward. We'll try to minimize our impact, again, as best as we possibly can, but we think that this type of space is vital to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton?
Ms. Krasinski?
Can I ask Mr. Meters to come up? I got a couple of questions for him.
Sky Meters, Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth, county engineer, offices on the 7th and 11th floor. Yes, sir.
Sky, you've been listening to some of the comments. Could you fill us in on what has, you know, happened since our couple of neighborhood meetings?
Yeah, Poppy Road has always been a road where there are truck traffic issues. There's currently an ordinance on that road that says no through trucks. But yet, our traffic counts show that, you know, and just as a neighbor said, neighbors said, they sat on their porch and see them, there are, there's a good amount of trucks that go down that road. Now, this becomes an issue of, are these people breaking the law? Are these people just accidentally getting to that location, can't turn around? So when I initially got into this, I was thinking it was, well, this is an enforcement issue. And, you know, right now, the sheriff's department, I don't want to speak for the sheriff's department, but from what I've heard, they've, their guys are going from call to call. So they really don't have time to be sitting out monitoring for speed and those types of things. So in those times, you're not going to get the enforcement. You might. But the neighbors are right, the trucks, there's more trucks on that road than there are supposed to be because there's not supposed to be any. And you get the trucks, you know, they can be coming off 20, cutting through, they could be drivers that aren't local. I think what we're getting to is, you know, at the last meeting we had, we talked, and if you punch into Google, like if you're a truck driver, you may do, it sends you down Poppy. So what we've looked at, or what are some ways that we might be able to eliminate or reduce the amount of trucks on that road? I'd love to eliminate it. And, you know, there are several options that we talked about, and I want to reinforce what everyone here said. The meetings have been very productive. It was very eye-opening to me at the first meeting with the residents there, just how big of a problem it was with the trucks. meeting with the residents there, just how big of a problem it was with the trucks. And also, you know, there's, so I'll back up a little bit, too. There's also a speeding issue on Poppy, and once again, that's, we can put up speed limit signs all we want. If people aren't going to obey them, there's nothing we can do about that, other than it comes into enforcement. But then you're still going to get people breaking the speed limit. But we're going to do a speed study. Right now, it's posted as 40. The ordinance says 40. We're going to do a speed study on there to see if it's warranted to lower that speed. We've got a contract right now with Abbott Marsh Consultants to take a look at that, to see if it's warranted to lower the speed limit at all. And if it is, that's something we'll do. My gut and experiences tell me it's not going to be warranted. But we're going to do the study to see that. Also, some of the things that we noticed was there was no trucks on Poppy, no-through trucks, but there wasn't any ordinance keeping trucks from going down Old Cleveland. So last week, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, we passed an ordinance that says there are no-through trucks on Old Cleveland from Diadem to Primrose. So now trucks should not even be getting to Poppy. Once again, it comes up to us posting signs that say that. We're going to try and look into more signs that will grab people's attention more. You may have seen some of the stop signs around the county where we have the LEDs. Those have been a big hit. But, you know, I got to, those come with a cost associated with it. But this is something that we're going to look at here, maybe LEDs around the no-through trucks. We're also going to, one of the ideas that came from one of the residents at the meeting was possibly reaching out to some of the industries in the area, giving them a map of, these are our truck routes, these are the areas where there are no-through truck routes. Thanks, Paul. These are the areas where there are no truck routes. And that may be a matter of them sending that to some of their suppliers and so forth, so that people are more aware of it. So it's one of those things where we realize that there is a traffic issue, and the main thing, well, from what I'm seeing, is there's trucks there that shouldn't be there. That's, to me, that's disturbing, because that means we're going to have to replace that road a lot quicker than we would any other time. And there's also the issue with the speeding. But ultimately, you know, this development is going to cause increased traffic from commuters, people going back and forth to work. It's like what Mr. Fair said up here, he gave the numbers. Even in its current use, if that was developed in a residential area, it would still cause more traffic from a commuter standpoint. And what we're trying to look at now, we also have Abbott Marsh onboard to look at, are there any other options that we're missing, like the three-way stop that was brought up? We'll check and see if that's warranted, or if it's something that we can do and the warrants would allow it. We're going to look into that on this study. So I want to make sure that we're exhausting all of our alternatives that we have to try and limit traffic on the road and also to decrease the truck traffic. And we'll do what we can, but it comes to a point where it gets from everything we can do from an engineering standpoint to posting a sign and hoping people follow it. And there comes a point where you put too many signs, they don't even pay attention to the signs that you initially put there. So you got to be careful in that aspect.
Sky, I think you've kind of went through basically everything on the memo that Mr. Fair sent on November the 3rd, you know, and I don't believe every council member got a copy of that, but I'd like to see that.
Are there enough copies?
Gets recorded into the minutes. And that these issues. You missed a couple.
Did I miss one?
You did a fine job.
I do have a question. A couple of different times, and you mentioned several times in your statement about there being truck traffic on this, and I certainly believe that there's a random semi, but you're not talking about semis going down this road on purpose, are you? Because I don't even know how they can make the turn.
Yeah, I think there are semis going down this road on purpose. Yeah, I think there are. Based on the traffic counts we saw, there was, I don't want to, I believe there was like, of the total average daily traffic, I think 4% of that said it was trucks, and of that, around a little less than 1% were semi-trucks. And that was the thing I was thinking first, all right, how do we make this uncomfortable for the truck traffic? Well, I drove down it myself. I'm like, it's already uncomfortable for the truck traffic. So.
I could see it, you know, UPS drivers, the Amazon drivers, stuff like that wanting to go this way, but I can't believe that a semi driver would ever go down this road twice.
Right. But one of the things that we want to do, too, is try and keep the accidental trucks from going down there, because one of the things that was brought to our attention at the neighborhood meeting is, once the trucks were getting to Poppy, and once they committed, they can't back up once they see a no-through truck sign. So we're going to try and work with the state to see if we can put some advanced signage out on the state highway, and then also, I'm working with our sign shop now to see if we can maybe do something up at the intersection of Olive and Old Cleveland, to see if we can put some advanced notice signs there that, you know, there are no-through trucks on Poppy, so people can see that ahead of time, and they're not committed, and then they just have to go through. But I do know, I mean, based on what I've heard from the residents, and some of the discussions they've had with actual truck drivers, that they've stopped, they're doing it on purpose. Some of them do it on purpose, some of them don't. So.
The, I know the Holiday Corporation is looking into help support the reconstruction of their approaches in front of this property up to Denham, is it? Danham?
Yes, up to, yeah. There, I think Paul had a graphic up there that showed the approaches at Diadem, and also increasing the width of the pavement there to allow through-traffic, right turn into general stamping, and then a left turn into their property. What we're also going to be doing next year is paving the road from Diadem all the way to Primrose, paving Old Cleveland, and most likely also paving, repaving Poppy. It's been a few years, and the trucks have really beat it up in some spots. So we're also looking at those types of improvements next year.
I would encourage Abbott Marsh to look at that three-way stop. You know, I'm going to make sure that gets in the record.
Yes.
Because I know Mrs. Booker and Wally there sitting there are very concerned that that could be a good starting point if it's statute allows it, you know, and the council warns it, you know. You know, I travel that quite a bit also, you know. And the condition of Old Cleveland going west from Denham is horrible, as we know. And you and I were out there probably a couple of weeks ago and parked in Wally's driveway. I don't know why Wally didn't see us, but we were looking at the culvert and looking at his ditch. And I hope you get that, you know, get a work order out to get that taken care of in the spring.
Don't leave before I talk to you tonight. Please.
But Mr. Booker kind of, you know, pulled me inside. He says, how come you didn't let me know that you were going to be there? And I said, well, that's the kind of way we are. We sneak in and sneak out, you know. But Wally knows that we're going to do everything we can to take care of him. And I got to, I mean, that's all I have for you, Sky.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Katanzright?
Mr. Metters?
Yes, sir.
So in addition to the other techniques you guys have talked about, we've had other through-traffic problems in subdivisions in other parts of the county. Are there any other traffic calming techniques such as speed bumps? Would that not be desirable on Poppy Road?
No.
Would that not be favored by the residents?
Given the, given the speed on Poppy, that will be, the warrants will probably show it should be. And also, given the hilly terrain, those speed bumps or humps would become more of a fun thing for the racers that, so given the, because I drove out there and looked at that after our meeting and that we had, and it's just that, given the terrain and the speed, it's more of a hazard than it will be to help in those locations. And also, I try to steer away from putting, and this was the previous county engineer's approach of this also, putting in speed humps and speed bumps, mainly because they can be, they can slow traffic down, but they can also be a hazard, and they're a maintenance nightmare. And they tear our plows up big time. So.
Understood.
But in this area, there really wouldn't be a good use. And I did try and think of other ways, too, and we even thought, tried to think outside the box in some areas, like a mini roundabout or something like that to slow people down. I mean, you all know I love roundabouts, but this wasn't a good location for those types of things. And what it comes back to is, we'll definitely look at the three-way stop and what else might be, do there, but what it comes back to is making sure that we've educated the drivers and we've given them advanced warning, and then possibly working with the sheriff's department when things get, you know, to normal for us, and see if maybe we can do some things from an enforcement standpoint there.
Maybe we can ask the sheriff that question tonight.
I wasn't going to put the sheriff on the spot.
I might.
Never a good thing.
You just did.
Can we ask the sheriff a question, Mr. Morton? Sheriff, would you be willing to come up here and talk about enforcement? Or is there a Traffic Management Task Force, Sky, that you're in charge of that involves?
I'm not in charge of anything like that.
That involves the county police and engineer working together on traffic management issues countywide?
Sheriff Bill Redman, St. Joe County Police Office at 401 West Sample Street. I did, last year, 2020, develop a traffic unit specific to handling traffic complaints. But as you know, trying to manage 457 square miles of the entire county and handle all the school bus complaints, school zone speeding, construction, so on and so forth, it's difficult for that group just to focus on every complaint that we get. But we do take those complaints very seriously. I have attended previous neighborhood meetings in the northwest part of the county, along with Councilman Krasinski and others, to discuss these types of complaints, specifically out in that northwest area with all the semi-traffic, which is a combination of truckers, truck drivers, trying to take shortcuts to get to their destination, of course, and then we do believe there are some that just simply put it in their GPS, and wherever it tells them to go, that's where they go. So it is certainly on our radar. I have, I did not attend the last meeting. Had I known about it, I probably would have attended. So if there are future meetings, just let me know what I can do. It was encouraging here tonight to listen that this particular company's taken the initiative to go that extra step and talk to the residents and try to assist by putting different measures in place to assist with the semis and the speeding and so on and so forth. But we will certainly do what we can to address those issues. The northwest part of St. Joe County, typically, knock on wood, I don't want to jinx anything, that's a safe area of the community. We typically have one patrol officer working that area on any given time. So the calls for service in regards to crime is not so high, but it's a large area for that one officer to patrol by his or herself.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Krasinski?
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. I just want to make a couple more comments. I do want to really thank Area Plan and our engineering department for really stepping up and going up and beyond with these neighborhood meetings and the Holiday Corporation, and especially Maureen Nemeth for putting those together, even though that night, the first one, it was kind of hectic, being with the weather and the meeting at Blue Heron. But it was a good meet, it really, we got a lot accomplished, we got a lot of concerns from the neighbors, which the Holiday Corporation has addressed. And Mrs. Booker brings up some very good points that we're going to hope gets addressed in this Abbott Marsh study. As Sky has indicated, no through trucks have been posted, or going to be posted here very shortly, within next week, which the commissioners did pass. But I want to extend my thanks for everybody involved, for really stepping up here and trying to resolve this issue for the neighbors and, you know, in Nature's Gate, Fox Run, Poppy Road, a lot of traffic. So, and it's going to get, it'll probably get worse, not just because of what Holiday's doing, but in the future, with the home growth, being out west, how that's going, and Augustine Lakes there. But again, I want to thank everybody involved. And I will support this zoning this evening.
Any other comments from council? Hearing non, may I have a motion on Bill 11921?
Motion for approval.
Second. Motion to pass Bill 11921 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 11921? Hearing non, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill 11921 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill 11421?
In ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council approving a compensation agreement between the St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 155 regarding merit officers of the St. Joseph County Police Department for the time period commencing January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2024. The petitioner, Sheriff.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. Committee report, please.
Mr. Morton, the Bill Number 11421 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Thanks, President Morton. Members of the council, Sheriff Bill Redman, St. Joe County Police Office at 401 West Sample Street in South Bend, here before you to hopefully get approved the compensation agreement between St. Joe County, our police department, our merit officers, and FOP 155 in regards to a three-year contract, which would begin January of 2022 and end on December of 2024, which would include a increase for all the merit officers for 2022 in the amount of $4,000, and then a 5% increase and a 5% increase in 2023 and 2024. And then with the, also, as part of that agreement, officers hired beginning on January 1st, 2022 and forward, would then pay into the pension, begin paying a 2.5% into the pension at this time.
Any questions?
Yeah, a couple of comments I'd have, and of course, as I've said before, I think we have a fine department, and I'm favorable to what you're doing. I do think that when it comes to the performance of the pension plan, which is now vastly better than it was before, I think that that improvement in performance belongs to our taxpayers. Our taxpayers stayed with us when the performance wasn't so good, and so I think they should have the benefit of that improvement in the performance of that plan. So I just want to make that comment. In addition, I think we have a program, which I said we have to maintain the integrity between us and the existing officers, and so the existing plan has to be played out as performed, as we said. But as to new officers, of course, we may be able to have a pension plan that isn't that aggressive, therefore, providing a way for them to get some additional pay. And I think that's in some of what we talked about. I think there, again, when that happens, it seems to me that that can be done without additional costs to the taxpayers, if that is carried through, because the savings in the pension plan can be computed, and the improvement that we're giving to the officers because their pension plan changed can be computed, and we can make that come out equal, so that we don't have additional to our taxpayers for that action. So those are just a couple of things I would say going forward. Again, I think in times like this, the main thing that we need to concentrate on is that I think we have a very good sheriff's department at a time when, Lord knows, we need a good sheriff's department.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Krasinski?
Sheriff, can you, I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Warner or for Mr. Augustino, can anybody update me on the Nihart studies or?
Yes. So Mr. Augustino and Kim Kay and I had a meeting with Nihart last week to kind of lay out with them what out with them what we would like in the feasibility study and, and kind of the different options and basically a breakdown of, okay, this is option A, switching onto perf option, optional, this is mandatory perf, this is changing retirement ages, et cetera, et cetera, and kind of then looking at, okay, this is how that would affect the county costs, this is how that would affect the officers, just to put it in short. And then they were going to meet this week, send us back a proposed plan, and then probably have a discussion. My plan was then to take that to the pension board on my end and within the department and, and go over the proposed plan and, and then have a second meeting after we get the proposed plan on any changes.
Anything to add to that?
I believe Pete was going to also loop some of the council and the commissioners in once we got the proposed plan from Nihart.
There again, a comment that I would make is that possibly the, the numbers come out that, that a new person with a new pension plan makes very close to what people have been here for some time are making. But I would like, I would also like to say that if the pension plan is really worth it to the people who have been here a long time, then, then that's, that's compensation that they should be thinking about. In other words, if you've got the pension plan and you've got the pay, then I think that's how, how it should be compared with a person who has a less pension plan and perhaps more pay. I, I think the calculations need to be made and, and looked at in that way.
Absolutely. We have to look at the whole big picture and total costs.
Yeah, because sometimes people talk about.
Total costs and total benefits.
Right. Total costs and total benefits, not individual costs, but total costs and total benefit. And the taxpayer, again, pays only total compensation. We could talk about all these parts all day, but the taxpayer only pays total compensation, you know? Okay.
Ms. Katanzright?
Mr. Morton, for Mr. Warner or whomever wants to answer the question, section four talks about the feasibility study, and it talks about a completion date of December 1st, 2021. Have you guys got any commitment from Nihart? Is that realistic? Should we amend that? Do we have any idea on a completion date that would be more realistic so we aren't going to pass, if we do pass this tonight, pass an ordinance with an improper completion date from section four?
Peter J. Augustino with offices at 131 South Taylor Street. The December 1 date's not going to be met as far as completion. I think we'll know where we're going by December 1, but it's not going to be completed by then.
Do we have an anticipated potential date?
It could be.
A placeholder we can put in there so we can maybe amend this so it's not?
I would say that we're probably looking at realistically a six-month period.
No later than June?
I think that would be far more realistic than the December 1.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenarecki?
First, I expect I'm in the severe minority here in saying that I'm very excited to see the outcome of that study. But, but second, maybe a little bit to Mark's point, if, if this current agreement stipulates a 2.5% pay into the pension starting January 2022, but we all know the results of, of this study somewhere out there, how would we move forward there? I mean, do we, would it be retroactive? Do we start another salary agreement, pension agreement for 2023? Just out of curiosity, how would that all line up?
I think the most practical way that would happen is it would be a renegotiation at that point. So the, what would cause the FOP to want to negotiate is because at, at that point now you're looking at, what are you going to have set going forward beyond the time period for this agreement? That's important to them, and obviously from our standpoint, it's going to be what, what is the total cost? One of the other things that wasn't mentioned earlier too that we're concerned about is as we come up with these ideas on how to potentially save some money upfront is, are we putting the pension health at, plan at risk and what's the unfunded liability there if there's going to be any? That's part of what's going to be included in this Nihart study as well. That's one of the things we're talking about. So while we want a model, we did talk about setting up the model and, and when you start tweaking it, what's the impact of the pension overall health going to be too? That, that's going to have to be factored in.
I just wonder if maybe it doesn't make sense to not make any change to what officers are paying into the pension now until we really know what that looks like, just in the interest of not having, you know, the pre-2022 plan, then the 22 to 22 and a half plan, you know? I mean, would, would it make sense to make no change to that until we know what it's really going to be?
So if you were an advocate only on the FOP side, you might take that position, but the FOP's already agreed to this. And from the county side, from the employer's side perspective, it is a plus. So that, that's an incentive for creating these increased pay going forward. The FOP is saying, we're going to have new employees kick into the pension. That's a total plus for the, for the county. So yes, you would want that from the county's perspective going forward.
I, I guess my, my concern is if we agree to that, and the FOP already has agreed to that, then why even do the study? Because if we get a different solution from the study that says, hey, we should do 2.75 or 3% or some other, whatever the solution happens to be, will they agree? Will the FOP agree to that? And then what happens to the people that we hire from January to September? That's, that's my concern. So maybe we could even make the 2.5% agreement contingent on the results of this study. So, so not less than. I, I guess my concern is what happens to officers that we'd hire in between?
My concern about what the councilman's talking about is that we can't even vote tonight if we're going to go down the road he's talking about. So are we going to vote tonight or aren't we?
I think that you should vote tonight, and I think that in response to Mr. Kenarecki's questions, I think the, the answer there is, involves a couple of factors. One, we're not looking, because we're starting here with a three-year agreement, we're not looking to stop with a three-year agreement. We're making changes that we're going to be looking at five, 10, 15-year impacts. And so we, we have to understand we're looking at that long picture, not just a short picture. The short picture is important because we're dealing with a situation that needs to be addressed today, which is keeping people and recruiting people. And so, so, and keeping in mind that this is a negotiation, it is a, like a labor negotiation of any other kind, it's open to renegotiation as we go based on new information as we get it. But we have the ability to make an agreement today, which the FOP has agreed to, which the county commissioners, I can say, support, and I know that the sheriff is backing it. And I think it's, it's important for, to have this go forward from this point, knowing that we're, we may be making changes based on new data.
Well, I think you'll definitely be making changes. I think everybody knew that, but part of the study will be that every new employee is putting 2.5% in. So that's part of the results. They will have that data as one of the inputs for their study. So what, can you address, I mean, kind of hit it, and maybe you don't have this nailed down yet, but what are we going to ask them? What is Nihart going to provide to us?
So we're going to look at whether we, that 2.5% should be a different number or not, and what the impact.
It's option one.
Okay.
Like seven different options or something?
We're going to, we're going to look at whether or not we ought to offer a perf as a requirement or an alternative to participate in the pension plan, and at what rate and what the impact of that is. If you have people participating in perf, they're not contributing to the pension plan, so then that puts your pension value at risk. So we've got to see where the equilibrium is there and, and do we get any gain on that? So that, that's part of it. We're looking at cost contribution on the retiree health benefit plan for the police because they, they contribute at about a third of the cost of other retirees. So we're looking at that as well.
I'm sorry, but is that part of the same study?
That's part of the study that's.
I thought that was two separate.
Yeah, that's part of the study too, that's in there. And we're also looking at impact on wages for the merit officers as well. As we do these tweaks, what happens to their overall compensation package going forward?
So is one of the options, the end goal is to get the officers, the new officers, off of this pension plan?
I think that'd be very untenable.
I don't, I'm asking if that's part of.
I, I think that you can't exclude that. I don't think that that's an objective per se, but depending on what the numbers.
That's at the end, you know, this is at the far end of this spectrum. That's where's what that is. And here's 2.5%, everybody pays 2.5% into forever.
That'd be a perf option, and it's going to look terrible.
I, I, I think you have to see where the data takes you on that.
And my question is, is that something that they're going to be looking at? Are they looking at that whole?
It'd be fine for them.
Yeah, I think we're going to, that's going to be considered, yes.
The whole spectrum of options.
Yes.
But, but as I said, and I want to say it again, I think you got to look at total compensation, because otherwise I think you're, you're in a situation where people say, well, the pension plan's worth this much, but then this other guy with a lesser pension plan shouldn't get as much money as I do. And that goes on and on. And so I think as long as you stay with total compensation, we can all work on this.
Any other comments from council? Hearing now, may I have a motion on bill number 11421?
Do you have a comment, Troy?
I, I would make just a couple of quick comments. I think both talking to Nihart and the pension actuary, and I know some of you guys know this, any kind of change in the pension will be, you're looking at five years, 10 years, 20 years out. You're not doing anything, even our nice 10% returns, you know, that's, that's long-term things. And then I would just add that this agreement, there were some folks on the council and the commissioners that asked for that 2.5%. As we were putting this together, we didn't just create this ourselves, there was input from the council and the commissioners on this. And then also, this has already been passed by the, the FOP, so I worry about how that would affect any kind of amendment or change that would be made.
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward. Just one quick aside on the scope of the study that we're doing through Nihart, would it be possible to, to look at bonding out the underfunded actuarial difference?
Yeah, I think some of the team that's looking at this has already, has, has a lot of that data from a couple, study that we did a couple of years ago. And I think that's one of the things we did to discuss. And I will tell you, that was not specifically discussed last week when we talked to Nihart, but I certainly, we, we can present that. I mean, that's something to look at and say, can, can you settle your future obligation that way as part of the overall package? I think it makes sense to look at that as an option.
Yeah, but when we look at it, I think the performance of the plan, which is vastly better than it was before, makes a lot of difference on this comment that's being made. A, a much better performing plan is a different story than, than what we had before.
Yeah.
And that's where we are now, with a much better performing plan.
Any other comments from council? My apologies, Mr. Warner, I didn't know you had comments. My apologies.
No need to apologize, sir.
Pardon?
No need to apologize, sir.
Any other comments from council? Hearing now, may I have a motion on bill number 11421?
I haven't moved we do this. We will go ahead on this.
Second.
Mr. Warner, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Ms. Katanzright?
I'd like to amend the agreement in section four and change the date from December 1st, 2021 to have the study target completion date no later than June 1st, 2022. That's the amendment I would like to make. I don't think it would be too much of a difference from what we're, what the FOP agreed to. I just think it makes it more accurate.
There's a motion to amend on the floors or second to the motion to amend?
Second.
Second.
Motion on the floor to amend bill number 11421, made by Councilman Katanzright, seconded by Councilman Tullion.
And in doing so, I just want to say, you know, it's imperative, as we begin the budget process next year, I think June would help us in that process, having that data by the first part of June.
Any other comments? Mr. Hammond will take a vote on the motion, on the amendment, I meant to say.
Vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero on the amendment.
Now, may I have a motion on 11421 as amended?
I move to approve 11421 as amended.
I, I made that motion.
We had to amend it.
You can second it.
Right here, second?
Let Dick second it.
Yes, I'd like to second that.
Motion to pass bill number 11421 as amended, was made by Councilman Kenarecki. It was seconded by Councilman File. Any other comments from council? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yeah, Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 114-21 as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero under unfinished business. Bill number 6521 was tabled at the request of the petitioner. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number 7621?
Yes. In ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council and many ordinance 7913, which established the Public Safety Communications Consortium of St. Joseph County by modifying section three of said ordinance regarding the composition of the executive board as established therein, petitioner Peter J. Augustino.
Mr. Peter J. Augustino, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Morton. It's sweet to be back.
I like your sense of humor.
Where are you going?
All the way from 131 South Taylor Street.
I've got some super secret news, but Mr. Sheckler has already left, so I won't disclose it at this point. This ordinance before you is a, a final step in a process that included many changes this year on PSAP. We went through the refunding with the lit funding formula. We have adopted a modified inter-local agreement with, for backup funding, and so part of that was to expand the executive board on the PSAP, and that's the ordinance that you have before you. This version expands by adding two council members, two from St. Joseph County Council, two from Michawaka, and two from South Bend, the president and another council member. And, and along with that, Mr. Morton, I'll remind you, I need a signature from you in our local.
I forgot, sir.
I'm going to get you after the meeting.
Have not forgotten.
Thank you, sir. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Hearing now, open a public hearing on bill 7621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second. Motion to pass bill number 7621 was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further counsel discussion on this bill? Hearing now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number 7621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda is new business. Next on the agenda, privilege of the floor limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda.
What's the J stand for?
J.
Next.
Mr. Morton? I thought it was something else.
Mr. Katanzright?
Under privilege of the floor, I was contacted by a constituent earlier today, and Mr. Warner, I might want to ask you to comment on this. I'm getting complaints about the leaf burn ban which we passed. Under privilege of the floor, I was contacted by a constituent earlier today, and Mr. Warner, I might want to ask you to comment on this. I'm getting complaints about the leaf burn ban which we passed, and the people are not complying with that. And the concern that was raised to me was about people not complying with the ban and then not getting, when they do call PSAP for a complaint, they've never seen anybody respond out to investigate the complaint, generally speaking, on the eastern part of the county in my district. And I'm just wondering if, I asked the sheriff to stick around, Troy, but maybe I'll direct this question to you. Are you getting a lot of calls for service for complaints of leaf burning yet? And if so, how is the department responding to that, or how will you guys handle those situations?
So, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about this. He's talking to Mr. Sheckler, but we had 453 leaf calls last year in lease season. So, what we have done is with the change in the ordinance, in the fine procedures and ban, totally banning burning, what we are doing is when somebody calls in to dispatch, if an officer is not available, then we have a online, we, online reporting system. We're also going to get that link out to the public. We will ask them to submit a picture with the complaint. Somebody in the department will then send a notice letter out. The statute requires us to provide them notice, and then after they've received notice of the first complaint, then the second time we will go out and issue a potential fine. Is how we've, yeah, those calls are overwhelming. We had over 453 leaf season in last year, so, and they have already started coming with Agosto.
How soon do you think the online reporting program might be operational?
We were shooting for this week or next. I've got a letter that I approved just yesterday for, we've got, we have some other online reporting things for small, like petty theft, theft under $200, and the person that handles that is going to handle this, and so we're.
Would you guys be promoting this to the public?
Yes, we will.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good, great response.
May I have a motion to adjourn?